Will be deferred until those minutes in total. This thing's not working.
No.
Did you guys hear me?
Oh.
No.
Can't hear you.
Okay, all right, I'm gonna do it again. Public input. Purpose for public comment on matters falling within the jurisdiction of the Select Board and not on the current agenda. Note, public comment on specific anti-agenda items with a public comment period will be deferred until those items are reached. Rules, two minutes per person. A person may speak once. Ten minutes in total. All participants wishing to address the Select Board during public comments may do so in person or via Zoom by
Recording in progress.
Speakers must identify themselves by name and street address. The Select Board may not deliberate or vote on matters discussed during public comment but are not on the agenda.
Sorry, did you say people aren't allowed to comment until the item comes up that's on the agenda?
Yeah, that's correct. So this, this public comment is for any item not on the agenda. Come on up. All right, come on up. For not, for an item not on the agenda, are you here for a specific item?
Hi, my name is Marjorie Gajewski, 7 Perkins Street. And I want to talk about 3A. 3A is an unfunded mandate per the Massachusetts State Auditor, who is elected state official independent of the governor. I understand Mr. Timman had told the state we will be in compliance of 3A by July 14th. No one has a right to make that decision and forward that information to the state. 3A will not be beneficial to the town of Wenham. The town boards know how the townspeople feel about the 3A mandate. There should be no town vote until 3A is funded by the state. The state has to provide funding for each of the MBTA 3A communities to pay for costs of enacting 3A. Being unfunded will have an effect on the whole MBTA 3A mandate. It allows towns like Wenham to file for an exemption for relief to Superior Court because we are hardly in a financial position to take on what is sure to be burdensome, very burdensome, cost to our town of Wenham. 3A will bankrupt Wenham. And I believe the board cannot prove otherwise. By filing for an exemption, it will allow us to wait to comply with 3A until and if the state funds it. It's incumbent upon you, our town boards, it's your fiduciary duty to file an exemption for the town of Wenham to seek relief from the court. Because Wenham can barely afford our town's government in what we are doing now. Never mind the residual monies who no one has mentioned or answered any of my questions previously on either board or done a study on for monies allocated to be spent for additional infrastructure to upgrades, administrative expenses, and water, sewer, police, fire, DPW, and any other unmentioned issues that will detrimentally
Marjorie.
affect 3A.
You're well past two minutes.
It's my time. I have one more thing to say. The state has not been upfront with us from the beginning. They keep changing the rules whenever they are confronted with objections. The state cannot sue a municipality for non-compliance to an unfunded mandate. Other towns have been in compliance and had grants denied, and that's unfair. By filing an exemption, it will alleviate undue financial stress to the town of Wenham and representatives regarding MBTA 3A. Are the planning board and the Select Board, are you actively working towards filing for an exemption to the 3A unfunded mandate? Other towns have. It sure would take a little time for Wenham's Town Council, KP Law, to file this. I guess that's my question, is anyone actively working on?
Thank you, Marjorie.
Be nice to have an answer somehow from someone. Thank you.
Anyone else?
South Celeste 20 Puritan Road. I was gonna say ditto on everything that Marjorie just said, and I don't need to go on ad nauseam. However, I'd like to point out that in addition to Middleborough and Mansfield, Duxbury is also filing for an exemption. And I believe KP is the law firm that also represents this town as well, I think, Hamilton. And this issue being as contentious as it is, needs to be explored into a little bit more than what's been going on here lately. If an exemption is available for this town, I believe the people in this town want that exemption. And I think the vote should be held off until all of those, all of those options have been explored and determined whether or not we are available to have that exemption. So basically what I'm saying is, there's, there's, there's a lot at stake here. And I think many of the townspeople here do not want this thing to happen. It's going to be a burden on this town, both for the infrastructure, traffic, police, fire, and it's going to end up being shouldered by the people of this town because it is an unfunded mandate. No one's thinking about all the infrastructure issues. Everybody's just thinking about the social issues and the political issues surrounding 3A. So what I'm asking, and I'm urging this board to hold your horses until a determination is made, and I think we should enjoin Duxbury, Middleborough, and Marshfield, at least, and Hamilton, to seek out, to see if we can secure that exemption. We don't need this. The town is good the way it is. Any change in this town is not going to be a good change. And it's a toothpaste that you're not going to be able to put back in the tube once it happens. We don't need this.
Thank you. Anyone else? Anyone online?
There's no one online.
Okay. All right, let's start with the town administrators' update and town announcements, please.
Is this working now? Can everyone hear me?
Can we just call FinCom to order?
Sure.
So, yeah, I'm gonna call the Wenham FinCom to order at 6:46. President Finsberg, Chair.
Dave Doggett.
So we've got three members, we have a quorum.
Jared is online.
Jared is online.
Jared, do you hear us? I don't know if he can respond.
Yeah, we're gonna move him, we're gonna move him to panelists.
Jared, can you hear us?
He's muted. Hello?
Hi, you can hear us, Jared?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
All right, that's it for me.
All right, a couple, a couple updates. Do we, this is working, right? Can everyone hear me? So as you know, or may know, March 31st of 2025 this year is when the extension for the remote meeting, the hybrid and virtual meeting options extension was put into place. So we're, we are anticipating that they're going to either be extended again or put in place permanently. However, I just wanted to make everybody aware that we will need to be ready to go back in person if an extension is not put in place by that time. Some good news today, we received a letter notifying us that we received or have been awarded the $500,000 grant for installation of the geothermal HVAC system here in Town Hall. That was really the last piece of a pretty big puzzle that we really needed to come through in, in our funding sources for that project. Although we don't have the money yet, you know, they said, don't, do not start the prob, the project until we have an authorization to proceed letter from them. But we are starting the paperwork and that is ongoing. Tomorrow, Joe, he sent out an email, he'll be sending out another one to remind everybody that we're having an all-board staff training available tomorrow on Zoom at 6:00 PM. It'll run about an hour. It's on easement, easements, land, municipal land acquisition and disposal, where I feel like this question has come up quite a bit lately about town-owned land, the disposition of what we're gonna do with our land inventory, as well as folks coming out and asking various town departments, you know, how can they purchase town land and things of that nature, so this will better equip us to answer those questions as well as the ability to move forward as we inventory our land. And finally, so the first official phase of the fiber connection is going to be starting on, what's the date, March, Friday, March 7th. There will be an outage of approximately four hours from 9:00 AM to 1:00 PM. So as I mentioned in prior updates, we installed a fiber ring that connects all municipal buildings plus the library, being that it's in, in Hamilton. And that fiber connection will be able to be connected into the North Shore IT collaborative fiber ring that connects probably about almost a dozen North Shore communities at this point. And the physical data center is located in Danvers and operated by the, operated and managed by the Danvers IT staff. It's certainly been benef, very beneficial to Wenham. We benefit from economies of scale and contracting for services and supplies. Additionally, being able to get access to professional IT support and database, data center management at a fraction of the cost as it would if we were to do it on our own. So the first, we've moved over a couple independent servers such as, I believe, Softwrite, our accounting, and AssessPro, our SQL assessing database, has moved to Danvers and are currently being utilized from that location. However, this is the first step to moving all our physical servers located at the police station. And it will affect Town Hall, H, Hamilton, Wenham Library, the Wenham Police, and the Wenham Fire Department as they need to move our firewall from Town Hall to Police because I believe that's where the information is gonna be funneled through, through the police station, then connected into the fiber ring. And that, those, that's all I have tonight.
So Eric Tracy hosted an open house this past Saturday at Cutler. But I think it's pretty well attended, a lot of excellent questions. I think people who hadn't been in Cutler ever, I think were made aware of the serious security issues that we have there, serious ADA issues that we have there. And basically, Cutler is kind of a disaster, the school, physically.
That's also open on the 15th, Saturday after this one, again, so 10 to 12. So if you've never seen Cutler or haven't seen it recently, you ought to go over and take a look.
So I just want to thank the staff for all the work that went into securing that $500,000 grant. That is a tremendous step forward for Wenham and a very complicated piece of work. So congratulations and thank you for that. On a lighter note, I just want to mention that the Hamilton-Wenham Community House and Stage 284 has opening night, Thursday night, for the School of Rock. They are putting that on for the next three weekends, and I encourage people to go out and support local theater.
So just picking up a little bit on what the chairman said about the Cutler School. A couple of months ago, this board voted unanimously to support at least the concept of the new elementary school project, which obviously is gonna be a lively topic of conversation at the next annual town meeting. So I wanted to, to remind the public of, of the position that, that we took and also to clarify for anyone in the public, and I've had some people ask me questions about this, that it's not the position of the town of Wenham that we would be looking to exit the, the regional school district, and that that's not something that's under consideration. In fact, we, as I said, you know, back as a board, the proposal to build a Hamilton-Wenham Regional Elementary School that we hope will serve the students of both towns for decades to come.
So if you didn't catch it in the latest HW News, page three, Senator Bruce Tar is sponsoring seminars on senior tax relief, given the recent legislation that went through. So Mr. Ryan Lynch, expert from the actual Massachusetts Department of Revenue, will be at the Wenham COA this Thursday from 11:30 to 12:30 to talk about tax relief.
All right, thank you, folks. We're moving on to the consent agenda, routine items for approval in a single motion, allowing them to be passed without discussion unless held. A minutes for the one January 7th, 2025 meeting. Appointments, zoning board of appeals, James Gowdy as an associate member for a term starting March 4th, 2025 through June 30th, 2027. One-day liquor license for the First Church, Wan Arbor Street, on Sunday, March 9th, 2025. I'll entertain a motion.
I move to approve items A through B in the consent agenda as printed in this evening's agenda.
Second.
Okay, ready to vote? Peter, yes.
Deirdre, yes.
Ben, yes.
Karen, yes.
Gary, yes.
All right, moving on to new business, items for individual consideration. These items will allow for public comment, 10 minutes. Purpose, the comment period will allow for public comment on individual and will be held before or after the board's discussion of the agenda items at the discretion of the chair. Rules, two minutes per person, a person may speak only once, 10 minutes total per item unless noted on the agenda item. So Steve and I agreed earlier today, we're gonna move the snow removal policy to before J. Is that right?
I think it was after J.
After J, sorry. All right, so that means we are on D. Discussion and potential vote on annual liquor license application for JSD Inc., DBA Town Liquor, 143 Topsfield.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. Good evening, Select Board. My name is Attorney Anthony Pesci, representing the applicant before you for an approval for a annual liquor license, namely for JSD Inc., doing business as Town Liquor, located at 143 Topsfield Road in Wenham. Thank you for your time tonight. The applicant has filed for a new license for application off premises for a package store located, again, at 143 Topsfield Road. It's obviously a convenience store. The premises consists of 21, 200 square feet of convenience store with a, an application for, for, for a full license. The applicant has a commercial lease in place that's been provided with the application. The applicant is here before you, her name is Rita Ben Patel. The application has been submitted with the licensing, has been approved by the inspectional services, by the fire department, all the permits have been received. The applicant has spent a lot of pride in putting a, a place together. I don't know if you've been there, but it's new. It looks great, I was there before I came here. We're asking that this board approve the license. It's great for the community, and if you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer those questions before you. Thank you.
I mean, my only comment is, thank you and good luck. And I hope, I hope it's a smashing success because I, I know that people in West Wenham probably frequent your store a lot.
Yes, yes, sir.
People going through, on, along Topsfield Road.
Thank you.
Any other, oh, I'm sorry.
Being from West Wenham, I just want to say, welcome to the neighborhood. We're glad to have you.
Also being from West Wenham, we'll slip you a little list of exactly what the, the other folks had supplied for the kids that, that they will adore. So, thank you, welcome to the neighborhood.
Just a quick question, has the applicant had prior experience with liquor license?
That's a great question. The applicant does have a current license in Middleton. She's had it for over 10 years. Yes, she has experience. She is TIP certified, which I provided. Michelle, Michelle has been fantastic, by the way, she's been helpful, pleasure, wonderful, wonderful person. But yes, she has experience with ID. There's a POS system that I was there today where there is a scan card and I scanned my license and it works perfectly, so, yes. Does that answer your question, sir?
Yes, thank you. Any further discussion?
No, only just to add my welcome to, to you, Mr. and Mrs. Patel, to the, to the town, and we look forward to patronizing your store.
Thank you.
All right, I'll
My daughter's been already, so.
I'll entertain a motion, please.
I'll do this one then. Move to approve the annual liquor license application for JSD Inc., DBA Town Liquor, 143 Topsfield Road.
Second, okay, ready to vote? Peter, yes.
Deirdre, yes.
Ben, yes.
Karen, yes.
Gary, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, have a good evening.
Thank you.
Bye-bye, thank you.
Yeah, nice to meet you, thank you.
All right, discussion and potential vote to allow the display of yard signs honoring the class of 2025 along Route 1A.
Do we, do we really need to discuss this?
I would have just one suggestion, looking at last year, we ought to have a clean-up date or a date that
Can you pull the letter? I think they may have proposed, did they propose a date in the?
They will be removed starting the Monday immediately following graduation.
Got it, all right, sounds good.
So I'll move to approve the display of yard signs honoring the class of 2025 along Route 1A in accordance with the memorandum provided to the Select Board dated February 25th, 2025.
Ready to vote? Peter, yes.
Deirdre, yes.
Ben, yes.
Karen, yes.
Gary, yes.
Okay, discussion and potential vote to implement Select Board public outreach meetings.
So I asked, I asked that this be put on the agenda. So over the past, I don't know, maybe six months or so, or since you began your term, Karen, there have been office hours that have been held by Select Board Member Anger and the Chair along with, with Steve Pulis. And so I think it would be a good idea to have another set of office hours. And it would be one that either the three remaining members or all five, we could figure it out, could do on a rotating basis. And I spoke to Steve about whether that's something that could be done. It wouldn't be probably, wouldn't be weekly, it wouldn't be bi-weekly, it might be monthly, it might be bi-monthly. But to have a, some refreshments and maybe we could figure out the venue and so on. But to essentially add a, an additional office hour period that would have members each taking a turn, or a member each taking a turn, hosting the office hour, again, with maybe some, some refreshment. So that would broaden the number of office hours from what already exists. So just put that out there as a proposal, and as I mentioned, Steve and I have talked a little bit about how that might work logistically.
So we don't have anything, we don't really have something to motion on, do we?
I don't think so, no, I mean
Yeah, I think the motion would be, if you don't mind, the motion, not in this, but so what, what I did, because we, we talked about the logistics of this, and there may be a need for, you know, a small amount of funds to help facilitate any sort of refreshments. So we moved, and this will be talked about in a minute, but $1,000 from IT into the Select Board's budget to supplement the existing $500 in training that's in the Select Board's budget that generally doesn't get spent down every year. So that would give you, you know, well, in the sake of transparency, it would be a part of, you know, the appropriated total at, at town meeting specifically for this purpose within the Select Board's budget. And also, it would give some working funds, you know, to help facilitate and see how it goes for the first year and then you kind of take it, take it from there. But you'll be approving the budget, so the vote would be, when you approve the budget, it would be approving that change because that's the only change that I'm aware of from the presentation that Jeff made last time.
Okay.
As someone who has office hours pretty regularly, on average, it's about three times a month, based on, with the exception of sicknesses and holidays, we are supposed to every Monday from 12 to 1 at the library. And it's consistent, the first, I'd probably say, six months that I did it, it was more or less an outreach as far as getting up to speed on some of the concerns that the community had and getting my knowledge around some of the, the items that I have, to be honest, that first six months. You know, I think you walk in, you get thrown out a whole bunch of questions, it's a lot of research on my end or the backend. But it also is the community touch base that I think that we miss. And I think it's really easy to sit behind a table or, and listen to people behind the podium, but unless you are able to put yourself out there and be able to understand exactly what people are saying. I think sending emails sometimes get intimidating, and I think the podium is very intimidating, especially being on video, and to have the accessibility there is huge. Do I always agree with everybody? No, there's a few people here who have frequent my office hours. And so it's really, to me, it's been extremely successful. And I highly advise everyone to do it, I think it's very I think it's very easy to sit behind a table and not listen to the community, but this is a great way of doing it, and I highly propose you guys do it, too.
The other, this is different than the model that we've just discussed, but I think it also might be helpful if there is a virtual office hour available as well for people who maybe are, you know, working outside of the town, for whom it would be more convenient to do a Zoom meeting from their office or what have you.
So I set up one of those, and it was actually pretty good. Abby was sick, so I don't have a choice, so I wanted to cancel last minute. So I threw it on, and I had three people call in. I use my personal MS Teams account, so it was, it's just, they don't have to use Zoom. There's no app. They literally just looked on it, and it worked out.
I think maybe having something like that as a standing, like you do every Monday, maybe a standing Zoom, and whether we did that on some sort of a rotating basis as well so that it doesn't fall to one member, I think would be a good idea. So I'll volunteer maybe to write something up on both of these concepts, and we could talk about it at the next meeting.
To be clear, I will still continue to do mine. I don't have to...
No, absolutely. Right, no, I mean, honestly, when I was thinking about, well, you know, that I'd like to do it, and so I was thinking of doing my own, and then I thought, maybe rather than having five separate ones, we would do, you know, something where there was a rotation. So I will proceed accordingly.
Thank you, Ben. Item G, discussion and potential vote to finalize budget and capital plan for fiscal 2026, joint with Finance and the Finance and Advisory Committee.
All right. Any preference whether we do budget or capital first?
Let's do capital first.
Please. Yeah, it's, yeah, they're still in the... Keep going. There we go. It's a big grid, so just look for the... That's, go back. All right. So I'm not sure how the boards want to take this. So this is the start of the joint meeting with the FinCom. The idea of this discussion is to finalize this capital improvement plan. These are the same projects that have been presented and discussed over the last couple meetings, and, you know, we really, at this point, will need to finalize it. So I don't know if FinCom or Select Board has any comments or questions, or how you would like to proceed on that.
I think, does anybody have any questions?
And I will highlight that, if you scroll to the next page, Michelle, although we were, we did receive that grant award for the $500,000, my, in my opinion, given the, you know, the uncertainty at the state level, and as Jeff alluded to, the, you know, the federal level to some extent, too, we may want to keep this in our capital plan until town meeting, you know, obviously with the intent of removing it. But if something was to change between now and then, as if, you know, any sort of 3A restrictions that pop up as we're going through the paperwork, we just got the letter, we haven't, we've just reached out to get the paperwork and start the process of getting these funds secured, you know, I thought it might make sense to keep it here, and if we don't need it, then we can just amend through the motion. And we amended the wording on the funding of the stabilization fund to reflect, to move a sum of money instead of a specified sum of money in the Warren article, so that will allow us to be flexible on the day of, to just amend the motion to reflect whatever is needed to hit that 1% threshold that the Finance Committee deemed to be appropriate this year. 1% of expenditures, basically leftover, unspent of free cash, so your net of appropriation is left as a starting fund balance moving into the next year.
So FinCEN, the Chair of the Board, so the FinCom went through this list of capital projects last Wednesday. I'm not sure if you guys, how you guys get informed of our decisions, but we basically had a motion that approved all the items on the list here, with the exception of the Historic District Commission, $50,000. I think we were not quite comfortable with that yet, but as you were saying, you know, we basically said, you know, we weren't sure what was going on with the HVAC, that big half a million dollar number, which was obviously a material part of it. But, you know, we had said that whether or not we spend that money here on this, or it goes back to free cash, it would be a lot of, it would be a good idea to have that in reserve for some of the expenses that are becoming up in the subsequent year. I think we discussed the trash, we've discussed the school, we've discussed, you know, the water district, the PFAS, all these things are coming up, and so it'd be a good idea to keep an eye on a number that large as something that would ease the tax burden of the folks to a spike that might be coming from any of those three items I just mentioned, right? And so, like I said, we made a motion, and we passed a motion to cover everything here but the $50,000.
Any other questions?
What would be the proposed status of the $500,000 if we take it out just before town meeting?
What would the what?
The status, are we just going to roll it back to free cash, or...
No, I believe the $500,000 would go to stabilization. So I believe the Finance Committee's recommendation this year, given the, you know, the debt service that we may be taking on for the schools, and also the unknown of the trash contract, to build the stabilization up in the event that it could be utilized to smooth any sort of peaks in the debt service, or possibly transition into, over a number of years, working our way into the new trash contract using stabilization to supplement that. But in either case, I believe they're recommending to go to 1% net of appropriation, so whether the $500,000 gets spent here, that would just reduce the stabilization fund contribution. If the $500,000 doesn't get fun, doesn't get spent here, then that would be $500,000 in addition to going to the stabilization. Did I get that right?
Yeah, that's right.
All right. Should we move?
You have a question?
Yeah.
I just want to ask the FinCom, so I also was hesitant about the Historic District Commission, the $50,000, but after receiving some further supplemental information about exactly what that entails, I feel much more comfortable. I'm actually in favor of it, so I guess I'm just wondering if you've also seen the detail and if you've had a chance to reconsider it.
So our meeting was last Wednesday, so I'm not sure if the information that you've collected is since then, but the data that we had at the time didn't give us clarity on how the $50,000 would end up making the historic guidelines, would make it clearer for the residents on the street or the property owners in order to comply. A lot of, a lot of the discussion was on that point, is, you know, we don't have enough information about how spending $50,000 here would yield, you know, a material improvement to the historic guidelines and the permitting process there. And we didn't know if there was going to be more money that needed to be spent on subsequent guidance, or, you know, if this was a multi-step process.
They do have the same information that you got.
They did receive the same package?
Yep.
Yeah, do you want to...
You want to clarify?
Yeah. Yes, I'm happy to, happy to help clarify some things. First of all, the $50,000 would be the most I would be asked. There wouldn't be any additional requests. But this is, basically, the guidelines are very out of date and were last drafted in the late 1990s. This money, they could be far more user-friendly, welcoming and engaging to applicants. Currently, the process is with, applying for an HCC Certificate of Appropriateness is very, I'd say, ambiguous, to say the least. We have a lot of questions coming in from applicants, and there are certain things that the, you know, the guidelines could use, map of the district, flow chart, description of the district, description of the character defining features, as well as introductory material could be improved as well. The current guidelines do not adequately cover the process required in MGL Chapter 40(c), which covers historic districts. There, this would benefit well over, I believe, 140 houses within the district as well, and this could also help avoid potential litigation for Wenham in cases of questions being asked. And this would also be in line with the master plan, just an overall idea of going more green in the community. I can tell you, working with the HCC the last couple of years, there's been several applications for solar panels, and the current guidelines only very briefly mention that. And also, solar is mentioned in the master plan as well, which I feel is relevant, but we've had a lot of questions regarding that, and I think this would help flesh out the issue of solar panels as well in the district. Just also with the current, the new ADU law also recently passed in the state, this would also be included in the new guidelines, which would help answer a lot of questions folks have as well. And, yeah, I'm happy to answer any of your questions. And I believe the HCC Chair is here as well, Kelly Schmidt, if she had anything to add, if the Chairman's okay with that. But this is also, we asked the CPC for funding. Unfortunately, it was deemed by the CPC that this was not a tangible asset under the CPA law, so we did not receive funding for that. So we're really trying to get this pushed through, if at all possible. Thank you.
Yeah, and I'd like to hear from Kelly, but I, my understanding also is that this money would then provide us with a product. It's not, you know, vague. It's, there would be a product, produces guidelines, helps to reduce subjectivity in the Historic District Commission, not having anything concrete to consistently refer to. So as you change members and so forth, this would standardize, help the learning curve, and as Joe said, get us in line with the law and consistency. But happy to hear from Kelly.
Hi, y'all. This is Kelly. I'm the Chairman of the Historic District Commission for the Town of Wenham. I've been on the Board since 2020, and over the years, it's been a very subjective decision-making process with applicants coming before the Board. The guidelines are very ambiguous and out of date. There's a lot of new materials that have come on the market that people want to be using, want to use, given that cost of solid stock lumber has gone through the roof. We can't, homeowners can't afford to put in all wood windows. When I moved to the district in 2019, I had to meet with HGC probably no less than six times to get the windows approved, the exact same windows that are in the building that you guys are sitting in now. It was very frustrating. It was, it was, and so, and the other big issue coming along now is that we have solar, which by right, we cannot tell people no. And also, the bylaws for the ADUs, all these things are coming into play now, and there is no standardization of any of this. People could put a solar panel right in their front yard if they wanted to, and I'm sure that would upset the town and ruin the aesthetics of Wenham. People also could put an ADU in their front yard, too, if they choose. They could make it out of vinyl if they choose. There's really no specific guidelines about material choices, where things can be placed. Nothing addresses the ADUs. Nothing addresses the solar. Nothing addresses material selection. And the process by which people need to submit the application is confusing. The back and forth between the applicant and the committee can go back and forth a couple of times for clarification. We have gone to the CBC to ask for funds because we are not a tangible, we're not producing a tangible asset. We are trying to protect the essence of the community and preserve this beautiful, small New England town. They deemed it inappropriate, unfortunately. Actually, they deemed it that we were late, even though they asked us to present, and they rejected our request. So now we're coming to you to ask if we can seek some funds, up to $50,000. I don't think it will nearly cost that much at all. Joe's done extensive research to find somebody that could help us write the plant, the documents, and whatever funds are left over, it'll obviously go back into the joint funds. But we simply also, as a volunteer committee, we don't have the expertise of the time to put this all together, and we do need guidelines to preserve the community moving forward as the changes come down from the state. So we're seeking this money.
I have a question.
Yes.
Does the committee, legally speaking, this is a look, feel, and character committee. This is not a committee that governs as of right zoning or changes to zoning law?
No, but the look and feel, it can't be subjective, right? You know, like, we could say, you know, it has to have the look and feel of what's next door, but what if somebody wanted to put up, you know, next to a historic farmhouse, an all-glass barn? Would that be in, you know, keeping? No, we're not asking to change in zoning. This is nothing, you know, but we're asking that we use outside help to somebody to help us define the guidelines and to define what is appropriate to be using for materials and the process.
But with respect, the guidelines that you produce for $50,000 are only as good as the opinions of the members of the committee that serve, and, which is the issue that I have. I think, particularly if you consider that the committee in and of itself is a look, feel, and character committee, it's not an as-of-right zoning committee. So I just don't see it as a good use of funds. I'd rather put the money toward OPEP or the stabilization, because you could write 1,000-page guidelines, and the next committee that comes on, it doesn't matter, the decision, whatever it is, is going to be arbitrary and capricious and based upon the opinions of the incumbents of the committee. And that's just the way the world works when you're legislating a look, feel, and character legislation. So I don't see it as a good use of funds.
So I disagree that this is an entirely subjective, capricious process. I think the point of this product is to hire a professional. This is consistent with best practice, as I understand it, across the state, and it is to add some objectivity, which is exactly what you're saying is missing. So I actually think these are funds well-spent. It is part of the master plan to bring Wenham up to speed with best practice across the Board, and I think this is entirely consistent.
I'm Peter Clay, and I completely agree with what Deirdre just said.
Thank you. It can no longer be subjective, and maybe we just have to give people that are coming into town some guidelines by which they can do work in renovations. And there's many houses that are within the historic district and other buildings that are without, outside the historic district that Historic District Commission has purview over, that we need to understand how we can protect that. And without guidelines that are current, you know, you know, these are 30 years old, outdated. The world has changed, that we need to be, you know, up to speed. We need to be current and also in compliance with the master plan. They go hand in hand. If I could write them, I would, but that's not my area of expertise.
Oh, there's somebody online.
I had a few, I had a few questions.
Go ahead.
So, a few questions. In some of the materials that we received, it says that... So, a few questions. In some of the materials that we received, it says that the HGC applied for a Massachusetts Historical Commission Survey and Planning Grant. Could you tell us a little bit about that? Like, did, why, why do we think we didn't win it? Is there the opportunity to go for it again?
There potentially could be, yeah, next grant cycle. It was a 50-50 split, so the town would have to still pay half of that. But there's only, I believe, five to seven projects that were picked this time around, unfortunately. It just did not make the list at this point. I think they were, I believe they said guidelines in general were not being picked this time around. So I'm not sure if it'd be different next time, but we did apply and did not receive, unfortunately. But again, it was a 50-50 split, so the town would have to still pay, for instance, $25,000 of it, even if we were to get the grant.
Okay. And that's a grant that apparently is available each year.
Yes.
And then...
We only have about right now in our budget, $200. So it's not even to cover 100 of what this could be cost.
The HGC only, Kelly's saying currently there's about $200 in the HGC budget. There's not, yeah.
Oh, does that, oh, what is it? What's the, what's the relationship?
I think she's just pointing out there's not a ton of funds that they...
Is there an application fee associated with the grant?
No, no, there's not, yeah.
Okay. And was the CPC's decision to deny it, I know, Kelly, that you, you mentioned some of the comments they made about denying it, but in, in Joe, your memo, you said that the CPC deemed the guidelines not to be a, quote, "tangible asset," unquote.
Correct.
So does that suggest that, at least the current membership of the CPC does not see this as an eligible project to be funded under the Historic Preservation Prong?
That's correct. And in fact, actually, I wouldn't say, it was, it was a split vote, four to four, I believe. But we had spoke with council, who said there were several towns. The issue is, the CPA law mentions, or the guidelines mention a tangible asset being required, and some could interpret that as not being a physical, there has to be a physical asset. Whereas our argument was that having these guidelines revamped, rewritten, would have overall benefits, be asset for the district to be improved. Basically, you know, the guidelines being approved would benefit the historic district in general, which district is, you know, we have, the town hall, for instance, sits in the district, is very important to the town. But, but yes, town attorneys did say there were at least three, I believe, towns, Wellesley, Sudbury, and maybe one other that had used CPA funds for that very purpose. So it has been done before. But yes, the current CPC rejected that with a tie vote.
Okay, that's good, good background.
And they also rejected it because we came forth again and asked, they asked us to come forth again, and we came forth again, and the, the decision was being made of not to accept our application late. They decided not to accept our application late, even though they asked us to come forward again. So that had nothing to do with what we were after. So, the other thing too, you know, on Main Street, I was on the committee, the HGC committee when this was decided upon, but the, the house that was turned around and renovated, that house does not meet, in my personal opinion, what is within the Historic District Committee's material selection. It's false, you know, it's fake copper on the gutters that will never patina. And there's lighting on the walkway, which is not common. There are units that, you know, are hidden that you can see from the street. There's a lot of things that I was surprised that the prior HGC overall, or the chair, approved.
With respect, you've just proved my point about the nature of the process.
But the thing is, is that if we had more clear guidelines, and what would be necessary and deemed, what would be deemed appropriate versus not appropriate, that would have never happened.
That assumes that what you feel is appropriate is what should have been approved. Again, all, I'm just raising a governance point here. I'm not trying to criticize people's opinions. I'm just saying that for $50,000, we're not going to get out of the box that, Kelly, you just pointed out you were in when you had to approve the last project.
But I didn't, I voted it down. And it's also, back then, you couldn't approve anything. There was two very strong women that had been on this committee for many, many years, and they just reappointed themselves. And it was completely arbitrary. Things were decided or not.
Kelly, and Jared, can we hold for a moment, please, and let's give it back to the chair?
Ben, do you have any other questions?
Yeah. Question about the $50,000. So it seems high to me, and I, so I want to understand the up to $50,000 concept. So this, the proposal would be to authorize up to $50,000 of free cash to be spent. What does that mean as far as, like, an appropriation? As far as, just mechanically, how would that work? If it actually costs 15, then 35 would revert to free cash, or?
The quote I received, yeah, from the company said around $50,000. He said it wouldn't go over that, but it could be, in theory, a little bit less than that. But that was the guideline I received was...
So that was from a quote?
Yes, correct.
So it's like, yes.
Just for understanding, the way the capital appropriation works is you appropriate the $50,000 for that purpose. We can't use it for anything else. So you spend what you need. I mean, you know, you, you want to be conservative estimate, but if it's like $25,000, if you think it's like $25,000, you don't put 20, you don't put $50,000 aside. But that appropriation will stay through the life of the project. And then, what we've done the last couple of years is we take projects that have completed and have balances, and then reappropriate it as a funding source in the next year's capital. So it offsets, you know, you might take three or four projects with like $8,000 or $9,000 in balance across the four of them, and then you use that to offset. It's all, it's all an appropriation at town meeting. We have no authority to use that. It doesn't get swept into some other fund. It doesn't go into a slush fund. It's for that purpose only. And it must get reappropriated at another town meeting to be used for anything else.
So I do think we need to continue on. However, Bonnie is a member of the HGC committee. Mr. Chair, if you could recognize her to speak.
Yes, please.
Uh, go ahead, Bonnie.
Hi, can everyone hear me okay?
Little bit louder, Bonnie, if you can.
Okay, great. How is this? Can everyone hear me okay? Thank you so much. In support of everything that Kelly Schmidt, our chair, has said, and in support of everything that Joe has also helped us with, this is in complete compliance with our master plan, which calls for design, planning, documentation. This is in order to help our town walk towards the future with a very clear path of what that will look like into, let's just arbitrarily say, 2050. We want our town to stay the way, keep the way it is, and we want to, whether or not, whatever happens with 3A, whatever happens with the new ADU legislature, whatever may happen, we want our town to look and feel the way it does. That's why we all live here and love Wenham. Design, planning, documentation, a design plan guide, is a very logistical, practical way for all of us to agree on what that looks like, so that anyone that looks to develop, or, you know, remodel, build, et cetera, is in compliance with what we love about our town. Thank you.
I think, I think we should improve it with the 50K in there.
Can I just ask just one more question? Can we get a copy of Wellesley's plan, or somebody's plan?
Yes, it's online. I'll send it to you.
Thank you.
You're welcome. I can send you ipswitches. There are so many wonderful, there are 20 examples here in the state that historical towns like ours, who've done a phenomenal job, mostly in partnership with their planning board, Historic Commission, and in some cases, others that we don't, we don't have right now.
Do they all use the same consultants?
Not from what I've seen. I gathered, like, the different, I've looked at the different consultants that they've used. I can't say that they all use one consultant, no.
Okay, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
But certainly some use JM, as we've used for our master plan, yes.
We're done. Okay? All right. I'd like to move on to the budget, please.
All right, well, first, let's set this. Ultimately, the authority with what's going to show in the warrant is, lies with the select board. So if the select board wants to elect what projects would like to go into the warrant article and take a vote with a recommendation, then the finance committee can, I believe, who has already recommended, as Finn said, the entire list minus the Historic District Commission, can either make a new recommendation or whatever is appropriate based on the select board's decision.
I'm happy to, to take a motion from the members that are here, and Jared online, to either modify to include the Historic District or stand as is. What are you guys, what are you guys thinking?
I'll move to include the $50,000 in the approval.
So any specific language you need?
None.
All right, so we've got a motion to approve the list now, including Historic District 50 grand. You're gonna, are you gonna second?
I'll vote against it.
You're gonna vote now? Okay. Well, I'll vote. I'll do a second, so I'll ask for a vote. So, any discussion? Finn votes aye.
Bob votes aye.
David, no.
Jared, no.
So we've got a split vote, so we've got one abstention, so.
So it fails. Yeah, it fails, no change. All right. Select board.
We want a separate motion then, to, I move that we approve the capital budget as currently displayed, to include the terms of $500,000 and $50,000 for the Historic District Commission.
Second.
Ready to vote? Peter votes yes.
Deidre, yes.
Ben, no.
Karen, yes.
Gary, yes.
Okay, four to one. All right, can we now move on to the budget, please?
And, so the, this is interesting. So with the, with the finance committee, you know, they just stood there, when you took the vote to, on the list minus the Historic District guidelines, were there five members?
It was five unanimous.
It was unanimous?
Yeah.
So, I guess, do we interpret that as a unanimous no vote to the huge list, or do you want to try to assemble the entire committee one more time? Or do you want to vote as a committee? I guess you already did, so I guess... I'm struggling with how to reflect the vote and the recommendation, because you voted, you know, for a list with five, and now we have a split vote with it added back in. And I just don't want to misrepresent the FinCom's recommendation at town meeting. Any, any ideas?
Well, we're, we are missing one member, so we could probably poll him in the next day or so to figure out if he's, would like to vote one way or the other, and that might give you a majority, or it might not. And then, you know, I'm not going to pretend to be an expert in the, the exact language that you have to, to meet these terms, but you could figure out some way of saying that, you know, the finance committee approved everything here except for the highlighted item.
Yeah, that's, that's fair. We can do something like that. Okay. Thank you, that worked well. All right, moving on to the budget.
Has this budget changed since you last presented it, Jeff?
Not in total dollars. What has changed, Steve referenced earlier today, $1,000 moved out of the IT budget and has moved towards this community outreach line for the select board. So in total dollars, it's the same.
That's it.
That's it. So if you see the select board, select board total, here's in the format that the town's used to seeing it. This is the traditional Wenham budget article, and how it will show up in town meeting, consistent with years past. But if you see, the only change here is the budget for the select board is now $1,000 more.
Right.
Other than that, as Jeff said, no, no bottom line. The bottom line changed, no other. Department totals changed, I believe his, with the inclusion of the paying off of the short-term debt. We were at 3.9% year-over-year. Is that accurate?
Yeah.
Including education.
Yep. I'd just point out that this last change was a, a late entry since we last met as a FinCom, so they should get a chance to sort of deliberate on that real quick and, you know, weigh in on that and actually vote for that small change.
All right, so if I understand it, just to make sure Jared and everybody else heard that, you're basically saying that it's the same budget that we, at all, I think we had a five to zero approval of the budget as it stood, which basically had a, if I recall, the summary, had a $100,000 under the two and a half prop limit, about there. So this is a $1,000 difference from that budget. So I'd say it's pretty immaterial.
No, it's actually, the, the aggregate budget is exactly the same. We've just moved $1,000 out of the IT budget and into this new line item for the select board. So the, the total dollar amount hasn't changed. It's, we've just reshuffled a little bit.
So it sounds fairly immaterial, so I'm, I'd be ready to vote for it. I don't know if you guys have any comments. All right, so...
I don't have any.
Okay. So could I have the, a motion from one of the members to approve the budget?
Still moved.
All right, we've got it from Jared. Looking for a second, a second. All right. So ready for vote? We'll vote. So Finn, aye.
David, aye.
Jared, aye.
Bob, aye.
And we've got one not here.
Yeah.
Any further discussion on our part? I'll take a motion, please.
What are we moving?
Yes, so gee, I move to finalize the budget and capital plan for fiscal 2026 as presented. Ready to vote? Peter, yes.
Deidre, yes.
Ben, yes.
Karen, yes.
Gary, yes.
All right, thanks. Pretty good discussion. Oh my goodness.
If you want to bring the warrant.
General discussion with the potential to finalize wording, make a board recommendation, and determine the order of financial-related items in the 20...
Yeah, yeah, sorry.
In the 2025 annual town meeting warrant jointly with the Finance and Advisory Committee.
So in, in the warrant that was circulated last week and then updated again yesterday, included the finance committee's annual report. I read it. I thought it was great. And I don't know if the finance committee wants to highlight any pieces before we move into the, you don't have to, but just, you know, where you wrote it, if you want to highlight any points before we move into the finance-related warrant articles.
I don't have any. I think it's just important that we have this, this sort of management's discussion analysis sort of equivalent, right? That it's not just numbers. Numbers don't communicate very well to all the members of the public. This sort of discussion is really important. And we take it as a, a pretty important part of the committee's responsibility to make sure that we're communicating this stuff well. And, and, thanks, Jeff, for all of your help in, in putting it together.
Yeah, I'd like to thank Jeff as well. And just note, you know, we do see some very material kind of financial headwinds for the town over the next couple of years. Hence, the views and the recommendations we're making around the stabilization fund, you know, keeping money within kind of the taxpayers' control. But the idea would be to draw on the stabilization in the next couple of years to, again, help smooth things out, as we've discussed, and that's touched on in some of the later paragraphs. I think it's, you know, very important.
I think that's it.
All right, thank you. Peter, a question?
Oh, sorry.
If it could. The presentation analysis that the Finance Advisory Committee did on the schools, is that going to be included into the warrant book itself, or how is...
Well, so, it's a good question. How would you like it to be distributed?
So the deck, the deck is, you know, some 20-some-odd slides, and so it's, it's pretty substantial. And, you know, again, it's, it's a question of what's the right format for this. We, we'd put it together in a way that was supposed to be digestible, you know, just from any, any... We'd put it together in a way that was supposed to be digestible, you know, just from any resident that wanted to see something and understand it ahead of time, and understand the reasoning that the finance committee went through in order to come up with their recommendation to support the proposal. So you guys, you know, we finalized it last week, we've passed it over to the town administrators to make sure that the select board had it a little bit earlier. Our plan is to release that to the public, you know, as soon as possible, and, you know, be ready to stand behind our work and explain it in whatever format you think that makes sense. You know, whether or not some portions of it are appropriate for the entire warrant book, you know, I'm free for, I'm free to discuss.
Yeah, I'm just throwing this out there. Eric is going to be making a presentation at town meeting before the article. I don't know if the FinCom, right, twenty-six slides, we could have, I mean, I'm just throwing this out there as options of what we could do. We could print them out and have, you know, a couple hundred copies available for distribution at town meeting, the report in its entirety, in addition to putting it out on the website, pointing people there through social media, you know, all those channels, but then have something at town meeting. I don't know if there is any interest or if you think it makes sense to have any sort of abbreviated recap, you know, a member of the FinCom get up and kind of recap the process you took and ultimately, you know, where you landed. I know you have the recommendation here, but I don't know if there's any appetite for that, if you think that it would be helpful.
One of the things that I think people should be aware of is that the level principal and the level payment do have a different impact on the tax payment. And that's one of the reasons we talked about using the stabilization fund if the thing is approved as a way to level it off, because, you know, it's fairly significant. It's over half a million dollars in the first year, the difference. And, you know, people may have a different view on the project depending on what that tax impact is in the first couple of years. You know, people may not, may be happier paying more in interest than having the payment deferred. So that's probably one of the key things that, you know, at least I believe should be, people should be aware of.
Just to be clear, the ability for us to control some lumpiness by utilizing the stabilization fund if the project went forward?
And just to add to that, so just, I mean, I'm not sure everyone is completely understanding that what that means, but the way it's been proposed to us through the school is that the debt would be a level principal structure, which would mean we would pay a much higher amount in the early years and a much lower amount in the later years. And the reason you do this is because it reduces total interest charges over the life of the loan. But the sticking point to this is that, as Bob mentions, in the first year, it is, you know, five hundred and seventy thousand dollars more to Wenham to take this level principal approach. And so we're looking at, you know, potentially using stabilization funds if we do in fact go the way of level principal to help reduce that. And just to put it in context, the tax impact of the level principal payment is two dollars and eighteen cents on the tax rate, which is over a ten percent increase to the tax rate. If you were to go with level payment, which is more what most people have, and when they think of a traditional mortgage, you always make the same payment each period, and the principal increases each payment and the interest decreases, that would be a dollar seventy-six in tax impact. So it's a pretty material difference to people. And as Bob says, it could really add to, you know, people voting yes or no just based on that first year hit. I still think there is a debate to be had as to whether the level principal makes sense, given the agreement between Hamilton and Wenham, which shifts apportionment every single year. So in theory, the town that is on the worst end of apportionment, or in Wenham's case, you know, we pay less of the total bill, obviously, but historically, we're at a higher end in apportionment right now. So by making higher payments in the early years, when our apportionment is higher than it has been historically, you could essentially be paying a portion of Hamilton's principal if you look at it that way. So I do think there needs to be a bigger discussion about whether the savings of interest over the course of the loan is completely fair, you know, in this particular, you know, apportionment environment that we have. I always reference Essex, but in Manchester Essex, the debt is fixed at the time, the debt apportionment is fixed at the time it's taken out, so there's no change. So when we would make decisions to go with level principal, it made sense because we knew we were both saving interest over time. But in this case, Wenham would be saving interest over time, but we might also be diluting that savings by paying more principal than we otherwise would have if we went with a different way of paying the loan off. So I think there's bigger questions to answer, but to Bob's point, the thing we're doing is trying to use stabilization to sort of mute the tax impact if we can, so.
So. Not being like Mr. Finance or anything, but it sure sounds like level payment's the right way to go.
Yeah, from a tax rate perspective, certainly. But when you think about a ninety-two and a half million dollar loan and paying more interest on that, that's also not an inconsequential number. And I think that will have to be part of the analysis when, as a district, we decide, you know, what approach to take. I do think that using level principal in the early part of the analysis makes sense because if we were to be approaching this with the level payment and the lower tax impact, and then when we actually got to the project and put the debt out and we decided, geez, you know what, it would make sense to do level principal and save some interest, now you would be coming back to residents and saying, I know we said it was going to be a dollar seventy-six, but it's actually going to be two eighteen because we've elected to pay more in the first few years. So this way, at least you're being upfront at what the maximum cost could be, based on what you know in the moment. I mean, this is all based on what interest rates are going to be in three years, which, you know, who really knows. But at least you're putting forth the worst-case scenario for people and giving yourself that flexibility later on.
That is the structure of that debt. As you look through it, as we tried to give all the alternative to the proposal, you know, the best possible scenario for them, right? And the town electing to, or the two towns and the school board electing to do the level principal payment, you know, front-end loads the repayment, right, which is, makes it more expensive, right? You know, four and a half percent interest rate, where, you know, everybody else here, if they invested in the stock market, would, you know, net of taxes would be paying six. So this, the discount rate says this hurts us by choosing this thing. So that's why we picked it for the deck, to say, even if we load this up in the highest possible way, it's still less expensive than all the other proposals.
And it's not final?
It's not final. We can do better, right? We might be able to figure out a way to, you know, move from level principal to level payment, and it'd be, it would end up better after you discount the cash flows.
Like you said, Jeff, it's going to be like two and a half, three years before we actually make the loan.
Right.
Or take the loan. Okay.
So back to the original question, you know, I'm happy to entertain the idea of, you know, a five-minute presentation or something like that there, you know, if it's appropriate to have an entire deck printed out, hundreds of copies, if that's appropriate for, or, I mean, I'm not sure if that's, you know, if that's violating any rules about advocacy or something like that.
I don't, I mean, the way you did it, I don't believe it to violate anything like that. And the only approval we would need is Roger Smurge, who's the moderator. He has to approve all materials. I don't see him having a problem with it, but I also don't want to speak for him. And we have printed out larger packets before and hundreds of copies, so it's not totally unreasonable.
I mean, how much fun is it going to be to listen to me talk about numbers for another five or 10 minutes during that four-hour-long meeting?
Riveting.
You know.
The thing is, if it's helpful, you know, I don't know, I don't want to speak to where everyone lands on the subject, but, you know, if the boards feel that it's helpful to have that, I think it's five minutes well worth the effort in a four-hour meeting.
I think it's.
However, I'll defer to you guys.
I think for an issue of this magnitude, I think it is time well spent. But also, before we continue on, I do want to say thank you to the FinCom. I appreciate this thoughtful analysis. And Jeff, as I know you are central as well, Finn, all of you, but I do appreciate the thoughtful, thorough, and very sophisticated analysis, both in the annual report and also for the school analysis. So thank you.
I, go ahead, Karen.
I just have a quick question. Is this chart able to be made public well before printing or the actual, the actual meeting itself? People walking into that have their own mindset well before walking into that meeting. If they take a look at that, like take a look at this, prior to being handed a packet or having the warrant, then you might actually change some folks' minds. And I think that people don't want to sit there and listen to forty minutes of finances, as much as it's amazing. They also are going to be having their warrant. They're just sitting there waiting for their line item that's important to them, and I think you're blindsiding them by not being transparent with this. And is there a way you can literally take this chart, put it on social media, or put it in everybody's mailbox and say, prepare ourselves?
Yes.
Which gets back to my original point. I think this information does need to go into the warrant, because although we've had many conversations, I'm not sure the audience has been that large. And certainly, the published warrant book that everyone gets is really the only opportunity to get all the facts out there.
So this, as laid out in the warrant before you, is appendix one in the warrant. So is there any other addition, like, and then the commentary that narrates the project? Is there anything else you would like to be in the warrant? Now, again, I can, we can, if the board, finance committee are comfortable, we can push all this out through social media. I mean, that is not, that's not a problem.
Yeah, I think we need to do more than that. Is there a way to put it in everyone's mailbox?
This will go in everybody's mailbox.
Goes in everyone's mailbox.
I know, I was just thinking, is there a way outside of that?
But this, but this will be in everybody's mailbox.
The one pager.
Yeah.
Can Eric have it printed out and have it for availability at pickup at the Cutler open houses?
I can't speak for Eric, but we can.
Eric has a second, a sort of independent document he's working on that takes that document you have there in sort of a Hamilton equivalent, and breaks it all down into one document that starts sort of the same way that does. It starts with the cost of the project, the MSBA funding, the net to be borrowed, and then it breaks down a page for Hamilton and a page for Wenham that looks very, very similar to that. So that will be going out from the school. I think, you know, we've talked most of the last few weeks in our meetings that that page that you were just showing, I think we did envision that as being in the booklet by the Cutler article itself. And I think I was just waiting to hear if we had any feedback, you know, one way or the other from the select board. And we'll be posting the whole deck package and that one pager on, there's a budget page on the new website that we'll be posting that, if no one's got any objections on the select board side tonight.
No, I'm just looking for being extremely transparent and putting as much information out there in as much different avenues as possible.
Eric is pushing out similar, I mean, it doesn't look exactly like this, but it shares similar information, incorporates Hamilton and Wenham together. They also have an online calculator that folks can go, and this is they're pushing out, they can go and put your address in or whatever, and it tells you what your estimated tax rate impact is. So, you know, none of this information is hidden, and we'll certainly push it out.
The way it's currently being presented by Vinnie and the consultants is zero, five, ten, fifteen, twenty, or five, ten, fifteen, twenty. And so it's much easier to see than all twenty years.
So as somebody who, I would have preferred to take a look at this, and I just want to make sure that we have it. Well, one of the things the select board says is, not only are we being transparent, but there's a lot of false information out there that we combat during office hours in our inbox on our daily basis. And so the more information that we, as a board, can put out there, the better. And I understand it's the same document over and over in different facets, but.
Yeah, we'll push it out via social media. This will be in everybody's mailbox in about two weeks.
A question. Has somebody checked to see if the school, the calculator agrees with what we did?
Don't believe it's live yet.
Oh, okay. I just, I mean, the worst thing for all of our mutual credibility could be to have a calculator out there that differs from what we produced.
I mean, we shared that concern, and the point was stressed with the superintendent. So I believe that they are, you know, making sure that it matches, but we'll raise that again.
When's the next Wenham wire due to be distributed?
Good call.
This, this week or early next week?
Would there be time to put, like, the link to the calculator and?
Yep.
Can we reach out to Emma?
And also the link to the FinCom report?
Yeah, Emma's following this long, where she had, she just got all this information. It's kind of all just rolling out now, as we were waiting to get the final MSBA numbers, then work up our, you know, final anticipated debt schedule and make sure that both communities to that point that we're all using the same assumptions, not one's using level payment, one using level principal. We have interest rate assumptions, so.
Yeah, we got the point of analysis paralysis. We were like, we need to put a pin in this and get it out the door as soon as possible. So, you know, the finance committee is basically ready to issue this thing as it is, and if there's changes, it's after this date. It was after the twenty-eighth, right? So this is the best information we had as of the last day of February. And we just, like I said, we need to get this out and explain the methodology here.
Great. So.
All right, so let's jump to the finance articles. So article.
No, we have to, motion to finalize the budget capital plan.
Oh, yeah, okay.
We did.
Did you want to vote for that?
My motion included both budget and capital.
Oh, okay, right. Sorry.
All right, so we were on the Cutler Elementary School article. I believe the finance committee has a recommendation of four to one. I'm assuming, the select board, do you want to take another vote? I know you recommended the project in an earlier meeting, but not specific to the warrant. Would you like to take a revote or use that tally?
Think probably should take the revote, just to make sure it's on the current warrant wording.
I'll move that the select board vote to recommend the article in the warrant that will be called the New Cutler Elementary School at two thirty-seven Asbury Street, Hamilton.
Second.
Ready to vote? Peter votes yes.
Deidre, yes.
Ben, yes.
Karen, yes.
Gary, yes.
All right, next up, disbursement and cleanup of scholarship and education funds. Did the finance committee vote on this?
We did vote on this. I was absent, but if you want to report my vote as a yes, I'm happy to do that.
We have a number of votes that were four to zero when Finn was absent. I don't know if, you know, it makes sense to revote and get five to zero.
We don't have a fifth member here.
Yeah. I mean, I didn't know if we could have you vote independently to, you know, but I don't know that it matters. I mean, it was four.
In a public meeting, I'll tally five. Select board? You need a recap?
I don't.
Yeah, I didn't know if you wanted a recap.
All right, we need a motion?
I'll move that the select board recommend approval of the warrant article to be entitled Disbursement, Cleanup of Scholarship and Education Fund.
Second.
Ready to vote? Pete votes yes.
Deidre, yes.
Ben, yes.
Karen, yes.
Gary, yes.
Annual operating budget, we just did. Capital improvement, we just did.
Do we have?
Funding of stabilization. I think the FinCom has recommended a one percent net of appropriation, and that's how we're going to arrive at the number.
Right, we chose the one percent because we figured that the five hundred thousand dollars was not solid, so we picked a one percent instead of an absolute dollar.
Okay, perfect. And, select board, if you want to make a motion to that effect, make a recommendation.
I will move that the select board vote to recommend passage of the article entitled Funding of Stabilization Fund as written in the drafts before us.
Do we need to mention the one percent in there? In the motion?
Yeah, I guess so, because it's.
Yeah, I guess so, 'cause it's not actually written in here, right?
Yeah, it's in an amount.
Where is the one percent gonna fit in this?
I just say, in an, in an, in the, in an amount that equ- that, um, results in one percent of annual operating expenditures, uh, to be left as a balance in free cash.
Alright, so I'll move that the select board, um, vote to recommend approval of the article entitled Funding of Stabilization Fund to be funded in amount equal to one percent of...
Net operating expenditures.
Net operating expenditures.
Second. Ready to vote? Peter votes yes.
Adrian, yes.
Ben, yes.
Karen, yes.
Gary, yes. Yeah, Finn, you wanna make your vote on that one?
Yeah, I'll, I'll make my fifth vote.
Alright. Uh, payoff of outstanding short-term debt. This is the idea that Jeff pitched a couple of meetings ago. I think the FinCom was unanimous sans Finn. Finn, do you wanna?
I'll, I'll vote with the, the group too, so we have unanimous, five, four.
Okay.
And I'll move that the select board vote, vote to recommend approval of the article entitled Payoff Outstanding Short-Term Debt.
Second. Alright, ready to vote? Peter votes yes.
Ben, yes.
Karen, yes.
Gary, yes.
Alright, uh, last year's bill, uh, prior year's bills. These two, has the FinCom voted on these?
Have we voted on this?
Yeah.
So we'll need to take a vote, so, um, entertain a motion to, uh, approve the article, tell prior year bills.
Second.
Alright, any discussion? Not hearing any. I'll, Finn votes yes.
David, yes.
Jared, aye.
Bob, yes.
So that's four.
Eric, four.
One absent.
I'll move that the select board vote to recommend approval of the warrant article entitled Prior Year Bills.
Second. Ready to vote? Peter votes yes.
Adrian, yes.
Ben, yes.
Karen, yes.
Gary, yes.
Probably can take these together, the cemetery and other trust funds exception article and the cemetery sale of lots transfer article.
On the first one, we need a vote from Finn. We're at four, zero.
So I will vote with the majority. You guys wanna entertain a, a motion to approve the second one, the cemetery sale of lots, to approve that nine thousand dollar number?
Second.
Alright, any discussion? Not hearing any discussion. Finn votes aye.
David, aye.
Jared, aye. Okay.
I'll move that the select board recommend approval of the articles entitled Cemetery and Other Trust Funds and Cemetery Sale of Lots Transfer.
Second. Ready to vote? Peter votes yes.
Adrian, yes.
Ben, yes.
Karen, yes.
Gary, yes.
Alright, Article to Fund Collective Bargaining Agreements. Articles required in the first year of the funding mechanism for the, um, anticipation of the newly implemented collectively bargained agreements.
We need to have a vote and maybe some discussion on this one.
Okay. You want me to?
Any particular concerns that you wanna bring to our attention on this?
No, but you, you haven't voted on this yet, so we've talked about, um, you know, you met with the select board in executive session. We sent some parameters around what potential contracts would be over the three-year life of the contracts. Uh, we ta- talked about it last week that we fall within those parameters, uh, actually a little lower, uh, than we had authorized. So, the budget as it's presented with a con- contractual reserve, um, if, you know, is, is more than enough to cover. Um, this is just a second article which, uh, under mass general law, we have to vote to authorize payment of the first year of the contract as a, just a administrative thing, and so it doesn't change anything, it's not appropriating any other money, it's just essentially, um, you know, memorializing that we've, uh, we've, we've voted to support those, um, and what's in the budget this year.
Thanks, Jeff. Any discussion from the FinCom members? Alright, then, I'd like to entertain a motion to approve this article.
Second.
Alright, any discussion? Not hearing any. Finn votes aye.
David, aye.
Bob, aye.
Jared, aye.
Four with one not present.
And I'll make a motion that the select board recommend approval of the article entitled Article to Fund Collective Bargaining I'm sorry, yeah, Article to Fund Collective Barg- Bargaining Funding Agreements.
Second. Ready to vote? Peter votes yes.
Ben, yes.
Karen, yes.
Gary, yes.
Adoption of prudent investor language.
That's what we need you on to, I think.
So, this'll, uh, you need a fifth vote. I'll vote with the majority to approve this.
Okay.
I'll move that the select board, uh, vote to recommend approval of the article entitled Adoption of Prudent Investor Language.
Second. Ready to vote? Peter says yes.
Ben, yes.
Gary, yes.
Alright, Creation of, Creation of Revolving Funds. We have one, uh, amendment from the last time we spoke about this. We are not going, at least at this point of time, as we kinda dug in and thought about future impacts to revenue sources setting of the tax rate where the town relies on, uh, a bulk of this money to fall into the general fund every year. We are, um, going to postpone the request for the ambulance, uh, but are, we're still looking to move forward with setting up a revolving fund for the building permit software fees.
And, uh, FinCom had voted five oh on this, um, but it's obvi- you voted, uh, approving up to fifty-one thousand dollars of free cash usage. There's now no free cash use at all, so I don't, wouldn't imagine this changes your vote, um, but, you know, you can decide if you wanna vote on that again. I don't know that there's a need.
We'll just, we'll just, I think we should vote to approve the modified language.
Yeah.
And that's in, that's gonna end up in the warrant. So, um, entertain a motion to approve the article as revised and show on the screen here.
Second.
Alright, look, any discussion? Not hearing any. Finn votes aye.
David, aye.
Bob, aye.
Jared, aye.
It's four with one not here.
Okay.
I'll move that the select board vote to recommend approval of the article entitled Creation of Revolving Funds for Building Permit Software Fees, which is displayed in revised form on the screen.
Second. Ready to vote? Peter votes yes.
Adrian, yes.
Ben, yes.
Karen, yes.
Gary, yes.
Alright, moving on to the water transfers and water capital expenditure. We'll do the annual transfer from the water operating budget to the capital reserve fund of thirty-five thousand dollars this year. Is there any questions on this article?
No, I need to add my vote, so I'll, fifth vote into the majority to approve or recommend to approve.
Uh, we'll just do this, this one by itself or are we bundling it with anything?
We can't have, has the FinCom?
On which one?
Has, has the FinCom made a vote on the, the two capital expenditures for the one?
We did, we voted on this one. I think, um, the fifty-two thousand, we could also use Finn's vote on this one.
Okay, then I'll be adding my fifth vote to that.
And the five hundred thousand?
No, the five hundred is, um, we have to vote on.
Alright, so why don't you take the first two?
Great, I'll, um, move that the select board vote to recommend approval of the articles entitled Transfer from Water Operating Budget to Water Capital Reserve Fund, which is a thirty-five thousand dollar transfer, and the article entitled Water Department Capital Expenditure in an Amount Not to Exceed Fifty-Two Thousand Dollars.
Second. Ready to vote? Peter votes yes.
Adrian, yes.
Ben, yes.
Karen, yes.
Gary, yes.
Alright, the Water Department Capital Expenditure for five hundred thousand dollars. This is for a, to begin the planning process of a water treatment facility uh, due to the recent federal, uh, guidelines or restrictions.
Yeah, state.
Is it state?
Federal is repealing their PFAS.
Oh, alright, so state.
But the, uh, state...
From the state, so yeah, so the, the state is mandating that we get down below, I pretend to know, but some threshold of parts per million of PFAS in, um, our current water supply does not meet that expecta- uh, does not meet that threshold. However, you know, Eric always wants me to stress that our current drinking water is, is very low. I believe, I guess, on a national scale, uh, but it is still above the, the minimum threshold the state's requiring. So if this law goes through the requirement, uh, we will end up having to, you know, either uh, bring in other water supplies that meet this threshold or build a water treatment facility here in Wyndham to treat the water, uh, to remove the PFAS.
Got it. We go to the next one?
Um, 'cause we need to vote, um, and so I sent something out to all you guys. I don't know if you had any other questions beyond what I put in there of what's in the fund and how much they'd be moving and that type of thing.
So I think I'm ready to move to a vote. So, um, we'll make our recommendate, uh, looking for a motion to rec- recommend the Water Department Capital Expenditure article with the five hundred thousand dollar value in it.
Second.
Alright, looking for a vote? Any discussion? No discussion. Finn votes aye.
David, aye.
Bob, aye.
Jared, aye.
Four with one not present.
And I'll move that the select board vote to recommend passage of the article entitled Water Department Capital Expenditure seeking to transfer, uh, an amount not to exceed five hundred thousand dollars.
Second. Ready to vote? Peter votes yes.
Adrian, yes.
Ben, yes.
Karen, yes.
Gary, yes.
Yeah. Alright, next, next up, Roadwork Chapter Ninety Funding. This just gives us the, the permission to accept the funds from the state.
You need my fifth vote to round that up, so you've got it.
Yep.
Five, two, zero, recommending this.
And I'll move that the select board, uh, vote to recommend approval of the warrant article entitled Roadwork Chapter Ninety Funding.
Second. Ready to vote? Peter votes yes.
Adrian, yes.
Ben, yes.
Karen, yes.
Gary, yes.
CPA Reservation and Appropriations. I'm going to ask if we defer a recommendation to be made in the motion at town meeting only because we are anticipating the CPC's recom- request that we include the closeouts. Um, we're getting a little bit of pushback, um, defer it until next year, but they really wanna have their closeouts, so these are projects that have received grants in the past, uh, and have been completed, yet still have funds available in their, you know, their, their grant. And would look at be closing that out and putting the money back into the bucket that it came from. But I think that would require, if you took a recommendation now, it would require taking another recommendation when the article was changed. Sound okay?
Okay.
So it'll be in the, in the warrant with no, no vote at all?
Yeah, I would just say, we've, it's, every year we have a few of these. It says recommendation, um, uh, to be made at town meeting. Community, community aggregation of electric load, I guess that's not really a finance article. Easement for electric charging. Oh, one question that came up and different communities treat it differently. Uh, on citizens petition articles, some, some communities want, boards want to weigh in and make a recommendation, some prefer to stay silent. Does the boards have a preference on the no-school consolidation? We have a citizens petition article that, that reads as follows, uh, no school, citizens petition no school con- consolidation to see if the Hamilton, Wyndham Regional School District should, one, permanently abandon their plans and efforts with respect to the consolidation of, uh, any or all elementary schools in the district, and two, pr- pursue and use the resources available to them, including any future financial awards or grants from the Massachusetts School Building Authority to renovate, maintain, and/or repair the Bukeur, Winthrop, and Cutler schools in their current locations. Uh, council has weighed in, this is a sense.
Wonderful.
This is what she deems a sense of the meeting article. There, it, it is, um, it is, it's not legally binding and in no way requires the town to do anything other than, you know, it, it is the general sense of the voting body in that particular meeting, uh, and how they wish the town should proceed, but it's not obligated to do so.
Uh, if, you can explain to me a little bit about how this works? So this is like any other ballot initiative at the state level, but this is just local where they've gotten enough, uh, people that have signed it that they are interested in having an official response by the select board and possibly the finance committee, is that?
Yeah, so what it is, 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 um, the way master of law works for a town meetings is if, if a resident gets ten signatures or more and submits it to the town clerk's office, and the town clerk authorizes the signatures as registered voters, that, and it's during the open warrant period, which the select board holds every year for about a month, the select board must add that warrant article as written to the warrant for the upcoming town meeting. So we receive that from, um, the sponsor is Will Hanson, fifty-one Fairfield Drive, Wyndham. Uh, he met the threshold with the required signatures, the select board has, you know, must include that in the warrant. The question is, is, would you like to make a recommendation on it or not? Every community, you know, treats it differently. Some choose to stay silent as it adds, you know, less validity to the request. Uh, you know, I don't wanna put words in anybody's mouth, but it's really on the, it's really a...
We, we did not, as a finance committee, seriously explore some of the options that is in this, call it ballot question.
Right.
And so I don't, I don't think I'd be ready to recommend one way or another without time, you know.
Yep.
At, you know, if the select board asked me to, and asked us to do an analysis, we could, but I don't have enough data to make a recommendation beyond what we already have.
Alright, and, and again, it's not a binding, I think what you say makes sense. It is not binding. It's not, but yeah, you know, yes or no vote doesn't change the town's required direction.
Any other finance committee members have any comments?
I, I'm still a little confused about exactly what we're being asked. Are, are we being asked if we would like to be, be able to respond as a committee to a citizen's petition? If so, the answer is no, at least on my part.
That's what you're being asked.
Okay, I'd, I'd, I mean, we're responsible to the Fin, excuse me, to the Board of Selectmen who, uh, you know, we're a committee, uh, deputized by the, by the select pe- persons. And, uh, we respond to them, I think, and then I'd rather not have to respond to anybody else.
Okay, I think we're done on our side, thank you. Select board?
I think, I mean, I, I think as Finn just said, like, the, the FinCom has a particular role with respect to, to these. I think our, you know, our role is a little broader in terms of some of the policy considerations. Um, I would, I would support, um, a select board vote not recommending passage of this, this article, but I think it probably is only worth doing that if it were to be a unanimous vote of the select board.
I think usually the select board has just let citizens petition stand strictly on their own at the end of the warrant article.
Then I'm, I'm, I'm fine taking no action. I think we should do, we should have a united
Yes.
front either way, so...
I agree. That's three.
Yeah, I mean, I think we've spoken already by recommending the consolidation, so I'm fine with staying silent on this particular article.
So the, my only question, Steve, is... So council is telling us that this is non-binding. How do we get the word out that this is non-binding? I mean, this is like...
I mean, you could get up, you could get up a town meeting and, and every, every article has a comment. Allows for comments, you could make that clarity in a comment.
Can you put it in the line?
Could you actually put it right below it?
I'll have to...
Or can Roger state it?
Yeah, I'll have to get feedback from council. I'm not sure, I'm not sure what we can put in this particular article with the city. I, I just don't have the answer, but I certainly can get the answer for you.
That's one of those transparency questions that we're gonna have to a- approach beforehand, because somebody who might be waffling on the school and then sees that will be truly confused and then go in there potentially voting in a different direction, thinking that this is a binding obligation. So, if there's a way that we can write it in there, um, or...
So I think what you're saying is we need to check on whether the town council's comments can go in the commentary here.
Yes.
Which has to go back to the town council to decide.
Yeah, this has to go back to the town council anyways. So she's ready, is expecting this tomorrow. And that, that will be. My questions.
Okay.
And if we can include a comment to that effect of her, per comment, then we will.
All right, so, so we have a whole, so are we done with FinCom?
We're done with FinCom.
We're done with you. Thank you very much.
Thank you for all that work this year, definitely.
Really great work.
Okay to sign off?
You need to adjourn?
You need to adjourn.
Officially adjourned, okay. So looking for a motion to adjourn the Wenham FinCom here at eight twenty-six.
So moved.
Second.
All right, second. Looking for a discussion, no discussion. Fins, Ray, guy.
David, aye.
Bob, yes.
Aye, Jared.
All right, so you have your pass.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So, I'm going to give the backing up a little bit. Whoever's running the screen, is that Joe?
What do you want, Peter? I'm sorry.
We have to go back to the non-finance articles.
Luckily, a lot of them are finance. First one we need to go to is.
Aggregation.
Yeah, the community aggregation of electric load. Have you said, Gary?
Yes, I think that's next, right?
Yeah. Yeah, this is really a bulk purchasing program that allows folks to, you know, just kind of shop around and get electric rates. It also gives you some flexibility on
No, actually, I just.
Renewable, renewable sources and options to buy, like I think specific types of renewable energy, right? Like what your preference is, whether it's wind or solar and all of that. This is something we started to go through the process of getting involved with a couple, a number of years ago, but it was so, it was, it was so popular that the state basically just shut down accepting applications for probably about a year and a half. And has just resumed taking applications again recently, so that's, that's what this is here for.
Thanks for getting it out there.
Well, I always say, fourth time's a charm.
So do we have a motion?
Ben?
Oh, sure, so I'll move that the select board vote to recommend passage of the article.
Second.
Ready to vote. Peter votes yes.
David, yes.
Ben?
This is the next one?
Yeah.
No.
Oh, I'm already, yeah, yes.
Karen, yes.
Gary, yes.
And this is, this is something that, it kind of slipped through the cracks of a number of people's desks, and it got brought back up to our attention, and I, this is something that was not included on the warrant when the select board closed it, so it's, it's, you know, two things. I'll explain what it is, but also, I'm also asking if you want to include it. You know, it's up to you if you want to. But if you read the, the commentary, or if you had a chance, we see the timeline goes back to November of 2022. So it's been a project that's been going on for a while. Basically, what this is, is it's the schools are interested in installing electric vehicle charging stations at the Bukeur School. The town is, I believe it's all grant funded. The town is the owner of the land. The schools lease the land from the, from the town. Schools are on, on board with this, but the town, being the landowner, has to get town meeting approval to transfer any ownership rights through, through town meeting vote. So this is a request to place an easement on the Bukeur School parcel, which is identified in the description, for the purpose of the installation of electric vehicle charging stations.
Do you have a map?
I don't. I believe they're, I'm not sure if a map will be available ready in time. I think they're still determining where the best place to locate them are.
As someone who flies into Bukeur parking lot at eight twenty-six every morning, it is completely full, so it'd be really nice to be able to see exactly where you're talking about potentially either adding to the parking lot or removing spaces, because with the snow specifically, there was a car accident in the parking lot of Bukeur with children involved in the morning about a month ago, so because of congestion.
Yep.
So if you're talking about changing things around, you're going to have a hard time without having a map.
I would, if you didn't.
I would put them like, if you're
Maybe we.
COA behind you, I'd put them over on the right. But I think that all that.
It's completely full of teachers, and what happens is, is then from a, from a snow removal perspective, you lose two parking spots, and so what's, what is happening is in the middle of drop off, people have to come through the COA, come down, take a left at the, at the basketball court, and then let your kids out of the car safely, because there's a crosswalk there. There is a multiple car backup, and that is actually where the, the accident had, had happened with kids involved, so.
There is a map.
I guess we do have a map. Can you plug, can you plug into that?
Gives a general.
Yeah, this is a last minute request, so if it seems like we don't have the appropriate information, we can, no problem, just remove it and place it on next year's when we're better prepared. This really just got, came across our desk a few days ago. I think it's that, if you scroll up.
Yeah, just want to show the proposed polls and poll, I think.
Yeah, so it's the easement for the pole location, so right there. I'm guessing it'd be somewhere around there, but again, I don't have any definitive information. At least that's where the pole is going to feed the charging station, probably within striking distance of that.
So where the buses are. So the buses come in at P 541, right, and then turn around. So you have complete congestion in the morning and the afternoon. If someone who also frequently picks up their child and gets stuck behind a bus, you're there for a good 10 minutes while the kid's empty and get on the bus. So that actual location is, is actually hard to get to and surrounded by children that are truly getting on and off the bus at that point.
I think we need more work on this.
Agreed. No problem.
Okay. So who's proposing this?
It was Vicki, Vicki Masson was approached, I believe, with a grant opportunity or with National Grid to get some funding. She made the pitch to the school committee back in November of 2022. And then some work was done to secure the funding, and then I think it was forgotten about.
High school did have some installed, I believe.
They do.
And it just kind of resurfaced last week, and I figured kind of went with the community aggregation, community aggregation. Just thought to throw in here, where the community is generally very supportive of green initiatives, but again, I agree, we're not, we don't have all the information. If it's not a slam dunk, I think we should wait.
It's a, it's a tight space around Bukeur.
It's tight. And it's a safety issue.
All right, so let's, where, where are we now?
We're going to remove that. So zoning articles, accessory dwelling units, floodplain overlay, general bylaw.
Well, let's take them one at a time.
An article to accept Spring Hill subdivision, yep. So Margaret, can you give us the quick recap on
Sure.
What the ADU, I guess what, I think.
We can start with the ADU. So the accessory dwelling unit is a zoning bylaw amendment. The planning board did vote on it at their last meeting to recommend the adoption of this new bylaw. Most of you know, the state adopted a new regulation that communities in Massachusetts have to allow accessory dwelling units by right now, up to a certain size, which is 900 square feet. The planning board has drafted the language with town council's assistance. We feel we've gotten to the final version of it. What this bylaw will do is create a new section of the bylaw that refers to these by right units. And will remove the special permit section that we have now that allows for accessory apartments with a special permit from the ZBA. That provision will be gone. The planning board feels that for now, let's just try the 900 square feet by right ADUs and see where we get to. And then in the next year, if we see how that goes, they may consider adopting a new special permit provision once we understand more fully the ramifications of the state's regulation.
So there's this guy, Peter, the contractor. Do you know who I'm talking about?
He just left. He was here the whole time. He left literally three minutes ago.
No, he left a while ago.
Peter, the contractor?
Okay.
I didn't see him.
Yeah, he, he says the 900 square feet is a problem.
Oh, oh, Mr., yes.
Mr. Walzick.
Walzick, yeah.
Walzick.
Begins with a W.
Walzick.
Yes, the, I think the board took that into consideration, but right now they have decided to get rid of the special permit provision and only allow for the 900 square feet ADUs by right in town.
All right.
What was he requesting?
All right, so can.
And the other thing, just, just so select board knows, the draft of these just came from council this afternoon. I forwarded them along, so I don't expect, you know, you had any time to go through it. These recommendations can be made at town meeting as well.
Good. I'd prefer just to have more time to read the draft.
I second that.
So we can bring these back if the board would like it on our 18th meeting and have a more thorough recap once you've had the chance to read the draft and. So what, does that sound?
Yeah, one of the concerns that town council brought up is that it was unclear whether by allowing for a special permit provision, people would be able to have two accessory dwelling units. One would be an ADU by right, which is up to 900 square feet, based on a specific definition. But then if we allow for a special permit for an accessory apartment, which is larger than that, she, she seems to think that they would be entitled to both. If, even if they got a special permit, they would still possibly be entitled to an ADU by right, which would increase the number of units on a particular, on particular properties to more than one ADU.
All right, so revisit this on the 18th?
Yes. Just in the commentary, it should say Commonwealth of Massachusetts rather than State of Massachusetts.
And under two, I think it's structures, not strictures.
I'm sorry, Gary.
Under paragraph two there, segment line height of structures, not strictures. All right, what's next?
Floodplain?
Yep.
So we, yeah, we were approached by the state's DCR with some new language that's required under our floodplain district. We currently have a regulation in our zoning bylaws for properties within the floodplain. They have, the state has changed some of the language and asked us to add certain requirements and change the map. The floodplain maps come out every certain number of years, I'm not sure how often, but those map references needed to be changed also. So all of this language we did get from the state, it's been looked at by town council, and it's found to be appropriate based on state regulations and guidelines. Any construction or activity within a floodplain still has to go before the planning board for a special permit if there is something that's being newly developed.
And the planning board would vote?
Yes, the planning board did vote to recommend this, this one's five to nothing, as well as the one prior. They voted that also.
Based on the recent updates to FEMA, or is this impacted at all?
I'm sorry, Karen?
So there's been a lot of information regarding FEMA and, and their support essentially, so is that changing at all? Will, will our maps be dependent on that, on their changes?
The FEMA maps are what the state uses for all communities. We, we don't really.
I guess my question is, they've changed a lot of them in the past two weeks.
Yes.
So does that affect this at all?
We'll get the new updated maps. You, you think they've been changed within the last two weeks, the FEMA maps?
Yeah, so, so a lot of them are being updated currently.
Yes.
And so my only question is, is does that affect this at all?
No, our language will reflect the most recent maps.
Okay.
Yep.
So I would move to, move with the select board vote to recommend passage of the warrant article entitled zoning article. Plan overlay district.
Second.
Ready to vote? Peter votes yes.
David, yes.
Ben, yes.
Karen, yes.
Gary, yes.
The next one is spring stormwater.
Yep, so this article is being presented to you by the planning board. The town of Wenham is required to adhere to this MS4 permit, and part of that is that we have to have a particular bylaw in place that discusses stormwater management. So a few years ago, we needed to get that into a regulation somehow. So the planning board put the stormwater management regulations for construction and post-construction activity that disturb greater than one acre. So we had that language in our planning board administrative regulations, just to kind of appease what we needed to do for the permitting. What, what we've been advised to do by Weston and Sampson is to now put that language into a general bylaw, take what we have in the general bylaw, which is called stormwater management, rename that to illicit discharge, because that's what the current bylaw that's in the general bylaw discusses, the one that we currently have. It does not discuss this requirement for disturbance of area over an acre for construction and post-construction management. So essentially what we did was took the current, current bylaw, that's chapter 210, Stormwater Management, and renaming it illicit discharge bylaw. The only other change in that is the definition, as we, we just added that italicized portion that says, as described in Massachusetts Stormwater Handbook. So that was the only change we're making to the current bylaw. It's chapter 210 under your general bylaws. We are then going to add a chapter 211. We've taken the language that's in the planning board's administrative rules and regulations that deals with construction and post-construction erosion and runoff and stormwater management. that deals with construction and post-construction erosion and runoff and stormwater management for projects again over an acre. So that's what these bylaws are. So there's going to be a new chapter 211 that essentially is just taking what was in the planning board administrative regs and putting it into the general bylaws, which is where it should be. Yeah, it's, the general bylaw also gives the planning board authority for permitting projects like that. So if we got a big project that disturbs more than an acre, the planning board does look at those projects and permits those. So it's mostly about stormwater erosion control, stormwater management.
You ready?
It's a good, good explanation. I'll move that the select board vote to recommend approval of the bylaw, the warrant article entitled general bylaw article stormwater management.
Second.
Ready to vote? Peter votes yes.
Deirdre, yes.
Ben, yes.
Karen, yes.
Gary, yes.
Just a quick clerical question. So we're seeing like red lines and things and I don't want to nitpick on.
Close parentheses.
Close parentheses. There'll be like a proofreading done of the final version of the warrant.
Yes. What's up next? All right. Where's the planning board on this?
Well, I don't want to speak for them, but I think they.
I, I know that you have been talking with them on this.
Yes, no, I attended their last meeting and I think, I think it's fair to say that they are looking for guidance from the select board on the question of keeping this as a placeholder on the annual town meeting warrant. And then we'll be looking for guidance from the planning board ultimately as to whether it believes that all of the street acceptance requirements have been met to their satisfaction in time for this vote, if, if indeed that happens, if it's ready. But I think they're looking for us on guidance of whether it would be kept open as a possible warrant article.
Given that there's a lot of unknown fiscal impacts as well as a lack of clarity, I think, at this current point as to where the responsibilities and so forth is going to fall, I would think that perhaps this ought to be postponed to next year until we get the full plans received, that we do not have our peer reviewer in place. So I don't see how we can get this done in just a couple of weeks' time. And I think the, at the last, was last meeting, we really provided for the immediate concern of snow plowing. But we know this is quite the exceptional circumstance as we've got Massachusetts DEP involved and stuff. So I don't think we're going to be able to, you know, get.
What about, what about potentially for June 7th?
They would like to speak, Peter?
I, I know, I see him.
Maybe, but no, I think this is going to take a lot of staff work. And then I think it's going to be a lot of thorough review because the questions here are unique to the property and going to open up the town to possible liability that need to have a legal counsel weigh in on too.
Margaret?
Yes.
So we're having another town, special town meeting on June 7th?
June 9th, yep.
June 9th.
Okay.
June 9th, sorry. Do you think you will have, able to answer all those questions in time for that meeting?
I can't, I can't say for sure. We currently have a plan that we're working with our peer reviewer to go over. The planning board meets next Thursday. It is on their agenda to make some kind of recommendation. I can't say for sure yet what that will be. I have to see if I get everything from our peer reviewer before then. The applicants are working on getting legal documents complete with town council.
So let me understand this.
Can't say for sure.
The planning board's intent is at the next planning board meeting to have a recommendation to us?
Yes.
Okay, well, wait.
Could I, before Mr. Goodman speaks, I just give it like a further update and it picks up on some of what Margaret said. So I've been involved in a couple of meetings on this, including one that we had this morning with, with Margaret, Kate, two KP Law lawyers, and Steve. And we tried to identify, and then there was a further meeting later in the morning with, I believe, Mr. Goodman and his, and the homeowners association counsel attorney Ansel, who's, I believe, on the Zoom. So my, my perspective is that there's a lot of people working hard to try to fulfill what have, what's become a defined list of things that need to be resolved before this could be reasonably put forward for street acceptance. And I think it's, to Gary's point, I think it's probably, in my view, unlikely that all of those things are going to be done in time. But my understanding also is that we don't have to vote tonight to take it off the warrant that we would have possibly as late as two weeks from tonight to do that if, if it's clear in two weeks that it's not ready. But I wouldn't want to do anything to squelch the momentum that seems to be happening now, a lot of which is, you know, being organized by the Spring Hill community, hiring lawyers, hiring engineers, trying to work as quickly as they can, working with the town. And Margaret and others are also working very hard. So I'm sort of pessimistic that it'll all get pulled off, but I wouldn't want to deprive them of the next two weeks to try to do that and in the next 10 days to try to convince the planning board.
Okay.
That would be my view.
That's fine. You all right with that?
Yeah. Andrew Goodman, two-way circle. Good to see everybody again. So just first, thank you to, there's been several select board members who've taken a lot of their own time to, to help with this and I appreciate that. We spent a lot of time, including today, we had a long call with our lawyer, Rob, who's on the Zoom, who's been before the planning board, and Margaret and Kate. And Hayes Engineering was also on that call. I think we made a lot of progress today. I think we make a lot of progress every day. Just to bring everybody up to speed on a couple, what I think are important points because I think there's been a little bit of misinformation or misunderstanding about a couple of things. So one thing is, we have a plan that has been submitted and is now out for peer review. The HOA submitted a check to cover the peer review fund, so hopefully Weston and Sampson can get started on that tomorrow. As far as the legal documentation, our lawyer, Rob, has worked with KP Law. We have submitted the legal documents that we think need to be drafted and agreed upon for street acceptance. We think the application is now complete. The planning board said at their last meeting, we want a complete application by our next meeting. We think that application is now complete with all the documents. We also, you know, there's a point of view that we disagree with and our lawyer disagrees with on town council a little bit on the, on the question of whether by accepting the street, the town also takes these O and M responsibilities. Okay, so two points on that. Number one, legally, we don't believe that the town does take on those O and M responsibilities. We've said that several times, but in, in abundance of caution, our lawyer has also drafted an easement that all of the property owners will sign, saying that, you know, for non-legal people, saying essentially, we understand these are our obligations. We as a homeowners association are going to fulfill those obligations and they're not the town's obligations, right? The second point on that is, I think there was some information circulated among planning board members and select board members about the potential costs of complying with this O and M order from the DEP, which interestingly, I learned today, the reason why it went to the DEP was because they couldn't get a quorum at the Town Conservation Commission three times, so then they had to go to the DEP. So we're back full circle there. But in any event, there were numbers thrown around, about $40,000 a year to comply with these obligations. That's incorrect. The last three years, and we had Hayes on the Zoom today with Margaret and Kate to answer questions, it's been a $1,500 inspection every year. And in the inspection, it tells you what you need to do to maintain under the guidelines. And in the last three years, since the development's all developed and the vegetation, the landscaping's there, we don't have these issues, it's just pump out the catch basins. And that's $3,500 a year. And we have quotes from Rapid Flow they've done in the last couple of years. And in fact, in the last couple of years, we've gotten a certificate of compliance from the DEP that has been recorded with the Registry of Deeds, the DEP saying, you've done everything you need to do for 2024. Here's your certificate and it's recorded. So I just want everybody to hopefully appreciate, you know, all we've been doing, we're trying to partner with the town to get it done. But it's also, this is a very modest issue. It's not a big, there's no financial burden on the town. If there was, we're, we're saying in easements that we're accepting it. And in, if, in a worst-case scenario, you're talking about $7,000 a year. You have 16 homeowners. I mean, that's, you know, we're paying $500,000 a year in taxes aggregateally. So it, it's, I just want everybody to, to frame it, with that frame in mind, to give us the chance to make this April warrant, because I think we're going to do it. Thanks.
Thank you.
There is Robert. Do you want to recognize Mr. Karen?
Who?
I believe this is attorney, I believe. Do you want to recognize him? He has his hand raised.
Robert?
Yes. Robert, go ahead. If you can hear us.
Hello, I'm Robert Ansel for the Spring Hill Trust. I, it appears as though the board is going to defer their decision for two weeks and that was going to be my request. So I, I have nothing addition to add to what Andrew had said. We are working hard on this. I'm very, very confident that we're going to get it together. The road is fine. The Anvil Plan was submitted last year. It was reviewed by the developer's engineer, which comes, was sent back to Weston and Sampson. Your staff has been great to work with. I'm moving along with, with town council. There is definitely a question as to whether the town is going to assume the responsibility for the operation and maintenance or that is going to be an association responsibility. I believe the town council wants the board of selectmen to make that decision as to whether or not you are going to assume those financial responsibilities. I'm informing the board that that's not how DEP originally set that up. You certainly can assume those responsibilities. Certainly, it would be a benefit for the residents for the town to assume those responsibilities. But I think that issue is separate from getting the road accepted. And I also would like to take the opportunity to thank the board for voting to have the road waste plowed this winter. We had an exceptional amount of snow based upon the last few years and that wasn't something that you were required to do, but we're thanking you to do that. So if, if you're going to make a decision in two weeks, that's great and we'll come back to you at that time.
Thank you. Kate?
I think it's important to just clarify a little bit more about this operation and maintenance plan. So the way an order of conditions or a super exceeding order of conditions works is this permit is opened and it's granted. Once all the work is done and it's peer reviewed, then it's closed out. And how it's closed out is called a certificate of compliance. So that's one time. You don't get it every year after this maintenance report is done. So the developer was doing all of this operations and maintenance work. I don't know for sure if they were cleaning out those catch basins four times a year like they were supposed to be. Like we said, this was a DEP product, I mean, project. When this particular project was closed out, there was this operation and maintenance plan attached to it, which are conditions in perpetuity, which means they agreed when they got the order of conditions to get the permit, that they would have these conditions in perpetuity. And that is what was then put on their certificate of compliance, which was recorded at the Registry of Deeds. So it's not every year that they get the certificate that Andrew is saying, this is a one-time thing to shut down the permit. This order of conditions is probably the strictest, I mean, the operation and maintenance plan is probably the strictest I've ever seen. I do feel like you guys need to know the true cost of what this plan would be. So, you know, I spent many years as a conservation agent. I've worked very closely with DEP for many years. I also talked to town council very specifically about this operations and maintenance plan. It is very clear to both town council and myself that this plan, as I laid out before, with the very strict four times a year of the catch basins and all of the strict inspections that need to be done, you can't just arbitrarily say we can only do it once a year. So if you want to know the true costs, we have our DPW director saying it's $17,600 a year to do the vacuum truck. I know that you got a different quote.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. We're, we're done, okay? We're done. We're, we're going to wait for the planning board to come back in, in two weeks with a recommendation. But we're not having the discussion in front of the select board now. We're done.
Okay, I just want equal time to talk.
No, sorry. This is not the right forum for this discussion.
Part of the frustration is what is the right forum? Because the planning board told us that this is a decision for the select board. So if I can be informed of the right forum, I'd like to be able to present.
So what I understand from Margaret, the planning board is meeting this week and they're going to, or next week, and they're going to come back with a recommendation to us. And so until we have that in hand, we're not talking about this.
But with all due respect, what the planning board said at the meeting, and I think Mr. Timmons was there, was that the issue of operation and maintenance was one for the select board. That the planning board, all they could do was say whether or not an application was submitted in full and make a recommendation on application. They specifically said it was the select board who was to take up the issue of the operation and maintenance and discuss that. That's why I'm here talking about.
Right. No, that, that's true with respect to the operation and maintenance plan, the planning, the majority of the planning board members did pretty clearly express last week that they don't plan to take a position on that issue. On other issues, yes. So I think that we'll have clarity from the planning board, hopefully, on the 18th as to those other issues that they are going to weigh in on, such as the peer review, such as some of the easement issues. One of which seems to be a little thornier than, than I realized until reading a little bit about it. And then, but on the O and M, it's ultimately, I think, it's going to be our call as to whether we see that as, what, what the degree of risk or not that we, that the select board thinks that is. So I think that, at least for me, I would want to have information from Kate. I'd want to have information from the residents to try to weigh what, what's the financial risk, even though I don't, I think the select board wouldn't, would not even consider approving this with an O and M plan that did not include the obligations being shifted to the residents, which they're, which they've agreed to do. But there's still risk if the homeowners association in five, 10, 20 years were to default on any of those, given that they're obligations in perpetuity. So, so I think, I think we, at some point, by the 18th, we do need to understand as a board the O and M issues. And it sounds like there's disagreement on, on the costs, but we don't have anything in front of us on those costs, although I believe that maybe there was something submitted at the meeting today. It's our spreadsheet or something that had some numbers on it. So that's one piece of the puzzle.
I think, you know, what Kate was doing was highlighting where the variance is stemming from. And the operating decision, the maintenance plan says one thing and that's what we're basing our estimates on. And you have the housing association that has been doing something else for the last two or three years. And, and, you know, so, and they have submitted to the state and they have gotten a certificate of compliance from just, you know, from what I've heard you say. But we do not believe it to be in compliance with the O and M plan as it's stated and, you know, working. And, you know, working with the state, just because you got one result this year, you can't expect the same result next year. So, if we're going to, if we're going to be asked to bid on a project, we're going to bid on what our attorneys interpret the O and M plan to stay. And that means a lot of the cost is in the engineering inspections. It's not just one inspection a year and submission of the summary. It's multiple inspections. It's having a vac truck go out and pump every drainage basin out.
It's not.
Every year, four times a year.
Sorry.
When the development was under construction. There are different rules amongst the subdivision.
No, it, but that's not what it says. So, like, but that's, but that's, I mean, that, that's what we have to decide is, is that's where the variance lies. It's not like one person is saying it's going to take, you know, eight days to do it, and you're saying it takes half a day. It's like, because you're, we're doing different scopes of work, and we're, we're quoting on what we've been told is the accurate scope. So, like, our estimates aren't going to change from that unless we get another, you know, council changes their opinion.
Well, I think if the plain reading in the document says that.
So, so, I'm sorry. We're done until two weeks from today, our next meeting in, in two weeks. That's when we're going to pick this up again.
Okay. I, I'd, I'd welcome an opportunity to talk with any select members who would like to talk about this before we get into a meeting, so we don't have a situation like this again. I feel like there's been just a big disconnect over exactly which rules apply to this subdivision at this time. And, and I think the wrong rules are being applied.
Okay, thank you. All right, what's next? Are we, do we have anything left?
We've dealt with the citizens petition already, but it's not taking action.
Is there anything else, Michelle?
Well, okay, so what has to take place now? You've done all the articles.
Did we do election of officers?
I typically make a recommendation on this.
Okay.
So, the only thing left to do with the article is to set the, set the order. I believe it's pretty close to how we do it in the past. I'll throw them up for any feedback, if you'd like to shift, shuffle anything around. We need to set the consent agenda, which I'm assuming is going to be the cemetery and the, the two cemetery articles and the prior year bills, like, years past. We don't have numbers yet until we set the order. So, I think that probably, if you're, if you're okay with the order, you could vote to open the warrant and then make a motion to something to the effect of, you know, the, the articles that will be included in this order in, you know, the April 2025 annual town meeting are as follows, and then read the article titles from the beginning of the document to the end, and then vote to close it. And then that will be the final list of articles and the order in which they will appear at town meeting.
Somebody?
I move to open the warrant for the April 5th at 2025 town meeting.
Second.
Gary says yes.
Karen.
Ben, yes.
Deirdre, yes.
Peter, yes.
Do you have an easy list, or we'll just read through?
No, unfortunately, I didn't, never got to put that easy list together.
So, I'll, I can start it off if you want, Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead, please.
All right. I propose that we provide the warrant to the town meeting in the following order. Article one, titled A New Cutler Elementary School at 237 Asbury Street, Hamilton, Mass. Article two. Make sure I remember it, please.
Can I ask a quick question? Do we want that first?
I was just thinking about that.
I mean, are there some, are there some high items that we can get done before the school? Because the mass exodus that will happen right after your first vote, and we're potentially not going to have a quorum, and then we're in trouble.
Well, I've been to schools requests at the beginning, and I think that in the past, you have put larger articles in the beginning. But again, it's, it's, I defer to the select board as far as strategy. I mean, to be, to be candid, we usually lose, the last few meetings, we've lost a quorum within the last first 15 minutes anyways. And we're lucky that nobody called it without big articles, which usually we just barely hit the threshold, and then people kind of trip.
There are going to be a lot of people at this meeting.
I just don't want June 9th or 7th, whatever date it is, to be eight hours long, because we didn't have a quorum after Article three.
I think the budget articles always come first.
Well, I think them.
I don't remember that ever not being that way, so.
I think the moderator, that's his decision, I believe, with the body as to when to continue the meeting if there's no quorum in fact. So, I doubt that it would go to two months later.
Let's leave the order as, as is. Let's see what Roger thinks. So, keep going?
All right, so I have Article two, dispersment cleanup of the scholarship and education fund. Article three, accept general laws, chapter 59, section 5, clause 221. Article four, annual operating budget appropriation, town and schools. Article five, use of free cash and other available funds to fund fiscal year 2026 capital improvement program. Article six, funding a stabilization fund. Article seven, pay off outstanding short-term debt. Article eight, prior year bills. Article nine, cemetery and other trust funds. Article 10, cemetery lots transfer. Article 11, article to fund collective bargaining funding agreements. Article 12, adoption of prudent investor language. Article 13, creation of revolving fund for building permit software fees. That was 13, right?
Yep.
Article 14, transfer from water operating budget to water capital reserve fund. Article 15, water department capital expenditure. Article 16, water department capital expenditure. Article 17, roadwork, chapter 90, funding. Article 18, CPA reservations and appropriations. Article 19, community aggregation of electrical load. Article, was that 19?
Yep.
Okay, Article 20.
I don't think we.
20, we skipped this next one.
Yeah, we skipped that one, okay. So, Article 20 becomes zoning article ADUs. 21 is zoning article floodplain overlying district. Article 22 is general bylaw article storm war, storm water management. Article 23, still placeholder, article to accept Spring Hill subdivision way as a public way. Article 24 will be the citizens petition, and Article 25, election of offices.
Did, did you second, or you're looking for something else?
Yeah. Ready to vote?
Yeah.
Peter, yes.
Deirdre, yes.
Ben, yes.
Karen, yes.
Deirdre, yes.
So, I think we're down to Kay. Discussion and potential vote to approve GenStar property management agreements as requested by the Affordable Housing Trust.
If I may, this is brought to you, we're bringing this to you from the Affordable Housing Trust, because, as you know, the Affordable Housing Trust now owns three properties, and we, they need to have a new property management company take over the management of those three properties. Harbor Light Community Partners has been working with them to manage two of the properties that they had since 20, for the past 10 years. So, we've, we did go out and look for a few companies to do this. We got back two companies that they would manage properties, that, that few properties. Typically, these companies want to manage a larger portfolio. So, this company, GenStar, we've worked with them to come up with contracts. There are two contracts that I think you'll be seeing, or that you've seen. One is for the Wenham Affordable Housing Trust Friend Court LLC. That group manages the 2B Stockwell and 11 Friend Court properties. So, there's a contract in your folder from, between GenStar and the, that LLC. And then the Affordable Housing Trust itself owns the 2A Dexter property. So, that is a contract with GenStar and the Affordable Housing Trust. So, what we need from the select board is to approve the allocation of funds for this from the Affordable Housing Trust. The, the amount is based on an 8% of rents that are taken in. So, currently, the, between the 2A, well, 2A Dexter is not rented yet, that's being renovated. But we anticipate a total of four, approximately $404 a month would be their 8% cut of any rents that are taken in, which comes to about $4,848 a year that would be expended on average. We don't know for sure what the rent's going to be for the 2A Dexter property yet. But we do have limits that we can't go above based on HUD guidelines, so. I don't know, do, I'm, I'm not sure whether I've explained it correctly, but if you have questions.
Anyone have questions? Well, I'll take a motion.
I move that the select board approve GenStar property management agreements as requested by the Affordable Housing Trust.
Second, ready to vote?
Peter, yes.
Deirdre, yes.
Ben, yes.
Karen, yes.
Gary, yes.
So, we have one thing left on the agenda, Karen.
No removal.
It's, we've been here three hours and 20 minutes. So, I think we're going to push that one back to, we're not going to have a lot on two weeks from now, are we?
Can we do it at the front of the meetings?
What's that?
Can we do it at the front of the meeting? We've been pushing this back.
Yeah, do it.
Multiple emails from people at this point.
Yeah. I'll put it first.
All right. Can I ask a question on that?
Yeah.
Do we have anything firm as to proposed changes?
Yes.
Do, do you, do you have?
We can put something out, so we, I'll put it together.
In the next pack. That'd be great.
That's fine.
All right.
Move to adjourn?
Second.
20:00 PM.
Discussions?
Deirdre, yes.
Gary, yes.
Ben, yes.
Karen, yes.
And are we going to do the picture next time?
No, you're going to catch up with emails, that's next time.
Yeah. I'm going to get my hair cut, Peter.
You can't send any.